Correspondence?
We have one correspondence tonight from the mayor's office. It was a letter to Bucky Simpson and that he had just returned from Washington DC and on the honor flight, and we just wanted to put that in the record.
Received and filed.
That is all for correspondence.
For the goodness of the city, anyone who would like to address this council, please step forward. Okay, reports of department heads, fire chief?
I have it up in the seat, if there's any questions.
Question for fire chief? Thank you, fire chief. Chris, Superintendent Parks?
Good evening. I have quite a few things here that you guys will be voting on tonight, so I want to cover a few of them. One, you're gonna see there's increases with camp fees. Our sports camp has been at seventy dollars a week, which is probably about a hundred dollars cheaper than anybody else a week, since the minimum wage was four dollars and seventy-five cents. Not to mention our insurance going up and also the busing for the pool. So, our recreation commission has approved a twenty dollar increase, which will make camp ninety dollars a week, which is still about eighty to ninety dollars cheaper than most of the surrounding public and private camps around us. So, that is one of our increase, one of the things you'll be voting on here tonight, hopefully. You also see there's gonna be a transfer of some money. We are looking with some money that we did not use for repairs, the pools and things, to actually start replacing some of our swing sets that are built in the nineteen, put in in the 1970's. So, that's what those transfers are for. I think we'll have enough money to actually put in three. We're looking at two, but I think we'll be able to put it in three different parks. One being Davage that has no swings at all, right now. Another one is, I would like to put two non-voting youth delegates on the recreation commission. What that does, giving youth a voice is great for funding opportunities, they really look for that. Not to mention it's just positive youth development and empowering our kids. We have a lot of teenagers doing a lot of great things, and I think they should have a little bit of input and let them learn the government process. And we can make a nice big deal about it, we can have people introduce you to them and get a couple members to be on the commission. The last thing is, I think I told you, we received the 2016 funding for the Orange County Youth Bureau. We'll be receiving forty-four thousand. There's a resolution on there for forty-nine thousand. The police department also wrote a grant, Officer Jackie Welch, and they're receiving five thousand dollars to start a new program that's called Too Good for Violence and Too Good for Drugs. That will also be working together with Middletown Cares and some funding and collaboration happening there. So, there's some, some good things happening, working together, right there. Just to hit a few programs quickly, the letters to the North Pole started on the 23rd, and holy cow, there are letters coming in. Everybody, we're getting tons of compliments about the mailboxes. We have to give a shout out to Sean Reiser and the guys in the Parks Department that built those wonderful things, and they had a great time delivering, and Santa Claus even helped deliver it, so that was pretty cool. Just for December, with the holidays coming up, we have a lot of special events, and I just want to be able to mention them quick for the public. Friday, December 18th, at six o'clock in Festival Square, we'll be caroling, so the Jingle Joggers, and they can go around to businesses in the downtown, so that's six o'clock on Friday the 18th. On Saturday, December 19th, from 11 to 1, at the Recreation Center, will be Santa's Workshop, where kids will have the opportunity to do crafts, have a story read to them, and I think there's a special guest coming as well. And then on Monday, December 21st, at 6:00 PM, at the Paramount Theater, there'll be the showing of the Polar Express. There is no school the next day, so it's a, it's a great opportunity for the kids to start their vacation break with the Polar Express. Tickets will be five dollars. The doors will open at 5:00. And the only people that can pre-buy tickets is if you have a group of over ten, you can get group sales at the Paramount beforehand, starting today, basically. But otherwise, sales will just be at the door. If anybody has any questions about any of these programs, give the recreation a call. Our number is 346-4180. We also had our first annual youth turkey trot, and it was a huge success, and I'd like to thank the high school track team for the donation of their time and their knowledge, and also for ShopRite for the donation of all the turkeys that went out to the winners. The kids really had a great time. And the last thing I have is, our kids are doing great things. Tomorrow night, the Orange County Youth Bureau holds a youth summit. There is gonna be a lot of Middletown kids there, you have to be invited to this. We'll have representatives from the mayor's youth council, we'll have representatives from SAD, which is Students Against Destructive Decisions, which is funded by the Middletown Cares. We'll have students from the teen center, they've been asked to come to share because our numbers are so big there, and we'll have students from our summer leadership academy talking about their experiences. So, Middletown's on the map in the county, that's for sure, and positive things are happening. So, is there any questions?
Alden Kleiner?
I just wanted to say that with the youth delegates to the recreation commission, it's, it's not just the youth delegates that will benefit, it's the commission and the people, because I think their opinions would be really valuable to have, and sometimes they think of things that we don't think of.
They absolutely do.
Thank you. Alden Witt?
Thank you. I appreciate you bringing to us the increase in the program prices. I do think that it's warranted, and, but for people who may have a problem with it or may not understand exactly what they're getting for that, can you speak on the quality of the instruction and the coaches that we have, and some of the opportunities for the counselors?
Absolutely. Our coaches at the sports camp, they're all high school coaches, so they all come certified by New York State. They also all trained in CPR and first aid. I mean, we had a medical emergency there a few years ago, where actually we had a child stop breathing from a seizure. That child is, is fine, and the health department, when they came to do the report, they said they can only think of one other camp where that child would've still been alive today. So, that's one of them. Also, the counselors that work with these coaches, they are Middletown students or alumni, they're usually college athletes or college-bound athletes, so you're really getting, I mean, great, great programming. And the kids get to choose what they want to do. It's not that they have to go to, do something, it's a very popular camp. And we'll also raise the fees, the fees with spring break, as well as little people. They'll be less though, they'll only be like fifteen dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Don, treasurer?
I have nothing specific, except I know you're gonna be voting on the budget tonight, and I hope you support it, and I know the mayor's gonna go over in detail. Thank you.
Any question, Don? Thank you, John, great job. John?
Just to remind the public about how we sell EZ Pass at the clerk's office, and we're doing a phenomenal job, and we've sold over 200 so far, and all the information is on the website, and that's had over 1,500 hits just for that. And speaking about hits on the website, our number one is the garbage and recycling schedule, which has had over 61,000 hits on it, which is phenomenal. And the second one is the Directions to City Hall, which is 37,000 hits, which is interesting too. And the third one is the state of the city by the mayor, over 15,000 hits. So, and then the third one is collecting yard waste, which is like over 10,000 hits. But, a lot of the information on the website, and please visit it, it's middletown-ny.com. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, any question for John? Tonight, we have our county legislator, Jeff Berkman. Like to say anything?
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
I thought I'd give you a quick report of what's going on with the county budget. We have our budget approval process, which is gonna take place on Thursday. It's a 725, approximately, 725 million dollar budget, which is just about 10 million dollars less reduced from last year. The good news is that the sales tax rate stays the same. In Middletown, as you all know, the three cities get a favorable distribution of sales tax, not because the county is particularly generous, but because the state gives the cities the option of doing it on your own, if you wanted to. So, that strengthens the mayor's hand in negotiations. So, happily, we have a, an agreement which is favorable to Middletown and Newburgh. So, also, on the property tax component, if the, if the budget passes, as the county executive has submitted, and we've done some moderate changes, Middletown actually gets a small tax, property tax cut of 2.79%. It's because of the equalization rate, but it's certainly good news to Middletown homeowners and property taxpayers. So, that's, that's one thing I wanted to mention. Next, Heritage Trail, a lot of talk about the Heritage Trail, that seems to be moving along in a favorable direction as well. The entire project is funded in the capital budget, which is certainly good news, and I have a, a longstanding record of voting against the capital budget. This may be the incentive for me to have a more positive view. Exactly. It's, it's certainly good news, and, and we're looking forward to have that moving forward, and the county executive seems to be an advocate of fully funding it, and then seeking reimbursement from state grants in the future, which is outstanding, let's just hope this happens. On the local front, I believe that the mayor is about done with the corporation council and the rest of the county attorneys about getting the intermunicipal agreement set, about the small issues of easements and a couple of technicalities along the path of the trail that have to be resolved. Sparkling devices, we went through quite a, an episode last 4th of July, and Middletown and New Windsor seem to be the two communities that had the most, many problems, we'll say. It was, people had the wrong idea, I think, about the whole, about what was legal and what wasn't, led to confusion and abuse. And I put forward two resolutions. First, to rescind that which the county approved, I kind of went in knowing that that was a long shot, and it didn't pass. It didn't have a lot of support, even New Windsor, for some reason, wanted to give this current law more of an opportunity to see if it could straighten itself out. So, I went for the next best option, was calling for a state law, which would give us that which we thought we had in the first place, which was an opt-out provision for the small cities. And that passed in two committees. I authored it, I'm happy that it's moving forward, and that will be voted on, on Thursday as well. So, that's in the right direction as well. And then another modest piece of small news, I'll say, is an additional 50,000 dollar allocation was put in. Actually, some of you, and the mayor, and I, and Jerry, of course, was the guy who initially set up the committee, to talk about the homeless services and the warming station and various issues that are corresponding with that, with that issue. So, I put in a resolution for, budget amendment, actually, for 50,000 dollars, to do additional work, and it's countywide, to do some assisting and, and help for other communities that want to set up warming stations, and also to get a database of those people that are most in need in our community, so we find out exactly who they are and what they need, and that might help all policymakers in the future determining how we can integrate some of these people into existing programs, and be an improvement for the quality of life of certainly those people in need, but for the rest of us as well. So, I was very happy that 50,000 dollars was added, and that gives enough money, hopefully, for at least a part-time worker to befriend those in need and to try to do some positive work for our community. So, it was an honor to serve the people of Middletown yet for one more year in the county legislature. This year was a bit easier than last year. Last year was a huge financial crunch, not that things are solved completely, but it's not quite the pressure that there was last year, so that's why we could have some additional movement on the budget for the 50,000 and other issues. Just lastly, as an aside, today I went to a reactivated foreign FTZ, Foreign Trade Zone, which we had and county executive reestablished, and I met with him a few weeks ago, asking for him to do that, so happily, he did just that, and now we're trying to get business in the international arena to Orange County, and of course, Middletown will be in my heart and in my mind, as it will be with all of you, I'm sure. So, if anybody has any other questions, now or later, or home, whatever, I'll be happy to talk to you.
Alden Kleiner?
It's just, first, thank you for working for Middletown, and particularly for that 50,000 dollars, that should really help. I have a question on the sparkling opt-out. The county is passing that, saying that they're asking the state to allow them to do that? You know, they're giving us permission to do it, if the state allows it, is that how it works?
Yeah, initially, when it came to a vote, it was some confusion, well, the confusion was right after the vote. We were informed that, that if the county were to pass the resolution, which did pass, that there was a pre-existing authority of the three cities of Orange County to opt-out. It was on that basis that it was voted upon, that was what, we were under the impression. After speaking with the mayor, I remember going back and forth with him, his impression was otherwise, and as it turns out, he was right, and legislative council for the city was right. So, then we're left with the situation that there was not an opt-out for the cities. So, then, okay, well, what do we do about it? So, I went first to try to rescind the entire resolution to start all over again, but, but that, they just, there wasn't support for that. So, the next thing, next best thing is to encourage our representatives in Albany to give Middletown, Newburgh, and Port Jervis the authority, and any other small city in the state, if they, if it's, if it helps in passing this resolution. But perhaps, I'll leave copies of the resolution, I think I even emailed it to Mr. Rodriguez and the mayor in the past, and I'll make sure that Mr. Nunchuck gets copies of all this, and perhaps your committees would go over it and write a letter of support for it.
Thank you.
Sure.
Johnson?
Could you just reiterate with the Heritage Trail? What are the, what's the real dollar expenditure for the project at this time, and from whence do those dollars come?
Yeah, well, there was an additional 2 million that somehow came in, went from 10 to 12, I believe.
Okay.
And when I asked about that, I got a, I got a discussion happened about the price of blacktop.
Okay.
And, so that's the current estimate, is 12. However, we won't really know the actual cost until it goes out for bidding, and it's actually sorted out. So, so we don't have the pressure of the moment to have the exact figure, 'cause it's a budgeted estimate, and at that point, we can determine whether that holds or whether it's a reduced amount. Also, also leaves the authority, by the way, for the bonding, as all bonding, with the office of the county executive. So, the ball, once it passes, the ball would be in his court to determine how much would be bonded. If he feels that he could do it for a substantial less amount of money, then no doubt he would bond less money, 'cause that would be in the best interest of all the taxpayers of Orange County.
And the county is anticipating covering what percent of that cost?
Well, the county, the way I understand it, it's, the county executive has offered, along with others in the county government, to front the money, basically.
Hundred percent, 90%? Should I stop asking questions?
No, I'm just saying that it's my understanding that the entire project is contemplating being handled, and that the county then would, would look to be reimbursed for the state and federal funds.
Go ahead.
Eighty, 20?
Eighty, 20 than the IDA, but there's more involved with IDA.
Okay.
But, the exact costs will happen when they get the bidding, and it's, quite frankly, Alderman, it's, we're in better, a better situation, more receptivity towards cooperation from the county for the funding of the project, than I initially thought would actually happen. I thought they were gonna, well, I don't wanna, I can tell you what I thought might, could've happened, but didn't.
Okay. Thank you for your efforts on that.
And it would've been, still would've been a victory, but not as good as this one appears to be shaping up to be.
Great, thank you.
Alden Massey?
Jeff, do you know how much money has been expended on that project already?
You know, it's funny, I don't know exactly, and it's difficult to determine, because there's been monies that have been expended by the county, money that has been expended to, by, by trail advocates that were actually in charge of the project at one point. Some of the money went for other segments of the trail, that have not been distinguished from our segment of the trail. So, I don't have an exact amount of how much was spent on behalf of the, our portion of the trail to go forward.
Would a million dollars seem like a lot?
A million dollars, sounds like a lot to me.
I understand that that amount of money has been for this portion, and if by some chance, the county doesn't approve it, and we don't get it, that that million is lost. I mean, that's, that's my belief, and I think the commissioner of public works is shaking his head up and down, yes and no. I mean, yes, rather than no.
Well, I think-
So, I guess what I want, people to understand, that we're hoping, obviously, from Middletown's standpoint, we want it, and we just don't understand why we would not get that, especially if up to a million dollars is gonna be lost, and it's only gonna cost another million.
Well, it's gonna be multiple millions to complete the project.
But it's gonna be reimbursed.
A lot of it.
All right.
And-
So, we stand to lose a million dollars, or not Middletown, but the project stands to lose a million dollars if it goes down the tubes.
I'm not envisioning this not happening, I'm envisioning this happening, and let me say, I was kind of blunt about it at the committee meetings, where I was repeated, I didn't really think I had to do this for you, because we're on the same team here, but I, let's say, reminded in a, in a-
Forceful way.
Forceful, polite but forceful way, that, that they have made commitments to the people of Middletown and Walk Hill, to make sure that the trail would continue from Hartley Road to Middletown, through Middletown, and out to Howells, and that's been the pledge, the promise that has been made to us repeatedly, and then it's our, not only our duty, but it's our, it's our job and commitment to make sure that the county does just that. And I, and I believe that the right recipe is there for this to move forward.
And I appreciate your being there for us and helping us out, but we've heard this story a long time, and we get a little concerned. I mean, skip the emotions of it, now it becomes a financial. A million dollars is out there that stands to be lost if they don't do it, when it'll only take another million to do it.
It's not gonna take just another million to do it, it's gonna take multiple millions, even for our, even for our section.
I understand that, but you're gonna get reimbursed, the other millions. We stand to lose a million dollars, from what I understand.
I, I don't-
Well, we've got a man behind you that seems to know more.
You're-
I mean, on this topic, you seem, when I said it, you seem-
You're assuming that they're not gonna go forward, and-
Oh, I want it to go forward.
Well, so I don't want to forecast what would happen if we don't go forward.
We're all on the same page, and we're all for it, and hopefully, it'll pass, we'll fly in colors, and we'll have it soon.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a positive direction we're going in, I don't want to-
Jinx it?
I don't want to be anything other than positive.
Twenty years!
Well, there's other stuff too, like the, the fact that it's, it's been, see, the other part of the trail was on county-owned property. This segment of the trail is on city-owned property, so that makes a distinct difference. It also brings up questions of liability, brings up questions of underground piping, it brings into questions of trans-
Is there anything we in Middletown can do to help you?
Well, I've talked to the mayor about it, yeah, so you could pass your intermunicipal agreement, that would be helpful.
By passing, you're implying that there's some reluctance on the city's part.
Not at all, I think, not at all. I think the city's been totally supportive of this, and I think I have too.
Alden Kleiner, and then, and then we're, we're done.
I, I just wanted to say that, you know, the county did pass that 1.2 million dollars a few years back, and, and a lot of that has been for the design and engineering of the trail.
Right.
So, it's not that nothing's been done, it's, there's been a lot of work been done, and now, it was originally through planning, and now it's through Rich, Rose, and Parks, but they are spending money, and so that money's, you could say it's lost if it gets designed and doesn't get built.
Right.
But I mean, it's not that the money's not being used.
Right.
And we have great faith that it's gonna get built.
Yeah, I think that it would be unconscionable for the county to, to reneg on its word to us, and I think that we'll mobilize to, to avoid that possibility, but I, I have an optimistic feeling that we're moving together, the county and the city, and the town for that matter, to, to get this important job done.
Thank you, Mr. Berkman.
Sure, thanks.
Mayor?
Yeah, I want to begin by thanking Jeff for the, for the report, and also thank him for his work that he's done on the Heritage Trail. I know he's being a little cautious with his words, because there was a lot of doubt last year on whether this project would move forward, but when the county executive was in town for the Clemson opening, as you know, he reinforces support for the project. He has also had made many statements, and made public statements in support of. Myself and Maria had the opportunity to attend the Orange County IDA meeting a few weeks back, in which the county executive was there, making a pitch on behalf of the county for the Middletown project, to have some of that 20% of county funding funded by the IDA. So, Mr. Newhouse is on board, I believe, as Jeff has stated, that the feeling on the legislature is much more positive, and we're, we're really moving, moving ahead on it. And it also affects way beyond that, by the way. So, it comes in from Goshen, way beyond to Walk Hill, Middletown, and back out to Walk Hill. So, it's, it's a great project, we're all on the same page, it's a, I think the adjustments for the, from the 10 million to 12 million are because of possible design requirements by, whether it's going to be a year-round trail, or, and required to have a deeper base and deeper black asphalt, but whatever it is, the most positive news, I think, that Jeff reported, and, and the county exec told me at the IDA meeting, was that he would be putting it into his budget, into the capital budget, for the entire amount. The county would then seek the reimbursements, 80% is funded through the transportation council. Myself and Jacob attended a meeting about a week or so ago with the, the Orange County Transportation Council. The county executive was there again, reinforced his support for the project, and the transportation council did fund the, it's in the three-year, four-year plan, you know, the funding mechanisms, how the money's gonna be drawn. So, all the stars are lining up correctly for the Heritage Trail to happen, and I want to thank not only, not only Jeff, but also the county executive for his leadership on this, because they did hit a little, little rough road. So, he has, apparently, the boat is straight, and let's keep it straight. Just wanted to touch on the sparkling device issue too. The county can opt-out, and, and I know Jeff introduced the resolution, it didn't pass, I don't understand the reluctance of the legislature to do it, but it's their call. The, and then each individual municipality can opt-in. So, we're requesting the state allow us to opt-out, hopefully, that will happen, but if it doesn't, we're gonna have a repeat, probably, of 2000, you know, July 4th, 2015. But also, just be aware that this year, this coming New Year's, people are allowed to do the same thing for that last week of the year. So, it's maybe not so much of a concern during the winter months, but we can anticipate it. So, we'll have to do as Jeff suggested, is lobby our state legislators, allowing for that local opt-out, if the county opted in. So, we had our annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony this past Friday, and probably the best turnout that we've ever had. I would be remiss in mentioning that Miguel Rodriguez, chairman, or council president, out of his own pocket purchased all 1,000 candy canes that were handed out, and he wanted me to make sure that I mentioned that, by the way. I'm only kidding, I'm only kidding. Out of the goodness of his heart, his wife Wendy delivered them, and, but the event was a great event. We had about 5,000 people, that was estimated to attend. Our first honorary chairman, Andrew Stevens, as you know, many of you saw him that night, he was out of the hospital, I think, the day before, suffering from a very serious, he was out of the hospital, I think, the day before, suffering from a very serious, rare muscle cancer, sarcoma, and, and Andrew was able to make it, and the next day he went back into the hospital for treatment, and so between the weather and Andrew, it probably made it the best event that we've ever had. So, our best wishes go out to Andrew and, and, and his family for the, for the holiday season. Also, I want to thank the Levi family for the donation of the tree. This is our second tree off of Amy Lane in the town of Walk Hill, so we want to let Dan Depew know that we're going to come out and raid them again, maybe next year for another tree, but I, I think everyone had a great time, I want to thank the bid district, John Deggan, and the economic development director, Maria Bruni, and all their staff people and volunteers for making that happen. Tonight, I also want to let you know that the capital budget requests are in, we'll try distributing them to you, we're going to go through the same process that we did with the general budget, general fund budget, and operate, and water and sewer budgets, it'll be at a discussion at the Board of Estimate, and then we'll be making recommendations to the full council. Another important note is that we've been advised by, a few months back, by the Board of Elections, that we need to do redistricting in the city of Middletown. Alderman Massey and myself, and President Rodriguez have been working on some preliminary plans, but they've asked us now to move the date of presentation from January up till mid-December, so we're going to start moving very quickly. It's going to affect third and fourth wards, because, and first ward. The fourth ward, as you know, is huge, with, in the distribution, the ward boundaries are set by population of registered voters, so it's not by population, but it's by the registered voters, so the, for voting purposes, in the election districts. So, we're going to be looking at, hopefully this week, on some different options, and it's going to require probably movement from the fourth ward of voters, and putting them into the first ward, and into the third ward, in, in some parts, because you're contiguous with the fourth ward being sandwiched by the two of them. But if we don't do it, and adopt fairly soon, the Board of Elections will do it for us, and I think we would rather have the input of doing it, rather than have the Board of Elections make those decisions. So, we're going to hopefully set up a meeting, I'll, I'll let everyone know, and we'll certainly get, get your input on, on some of the decisions that will be recommended. Also, tonight, we have, we'll be voting on the city budget, and as you see on the screen, Eileen, can you put it up? You do have it up. It's the budget highlights, and all we're doing is budget highlights tonight. We've had our public hearing at 6 o'clock, no one from the public showed. We had Chief Barone and Chief Lewis from the Fire Department, and reporter Dick Bain from the Times Hill Record. Hopefully, that's a sign of people who are happy with the budget as being presented. We did have several weeks of work with our treasurer, Don Paris, working with the Board of Estimate, and, and the department heads, and we're happy to announce that we are staying within the tax cap once again, which will make Middletown residents eligible for the tax refund, but we wanted to go briefly in Go To Page 1, if you could, which shows the 2016 budget highlights. And what it shows is the 15 spending and the 2016 recommended budget, and this is in thousand. For our general operations in 15, you see we had $6,594,000, and in 2016, it's $6,774,000. The special items line is liability insurance, claims, tax surgeries, and you'll see there's a slight decline in that line, down to $1,082,000. Personal services, which includes payroll, basically, for all different departments, we had $15,471,000, and the 2016 number is $15,659,000. The employee benefits line, this is the healthcare, pensions, a very large part of our budget is going up, probably the most significant part, from $12,661,000 to $13,014,000. And our debt service payment is actually going down just slightly, which is a result of some of the, the use of the debt, debt service fund balance. The next page, we go on to some of the selected fixed costs, just to highlight what the cost of government is. Our insurance is down from, up from $846,000, and this is all general fund, not water and sewer, to $854,000. Our street lighting costs are $438,000 in 15, almost a half a million dollars in 16, $486,000. This is being addressed in our shared services and our discussions with ESG, where the, the state has recently passed a law allowing municipalities to take over street lighting operations, and we're projecting, between street lighting and water meters, and this is a whole separate project, a $15.4 million savings over a 15-year period. But you'll be getting all of that information for, and that's all guaranteed savings, by the way, through this program of New York State. So, you'll start seeing this number come down significantly in, in the years, but when I tell people we spend almost a half a million dollars just to, for our streetlights, they, they don't believe it, but as you can see, it's, it's a real number. Our gas and oil went down from $452,000 to $385,000, primarily the cost of gas. Repairs and equipment, we had a slight increase from $533,000 to $584,000, and our landfill is going up, and these are landfill costs for dumping your garbage, from a thousand, $1,068,000, that's just to put the garbage at, to the landfill, and pay for the trucking, to 1.1 million, $1,143,000. As you saw in my comment in the paper this year, we're going to focus on a few areas in the budget that need to be cut. I touched on the lighting and, and the ESG project. Landfill is another area that we need to do something. Our recycling rates are horrible, I've been saying it for a few years, are actually horrible, still maintaining about 6%, so part of our plan for sanitation, and we're looking at every possibility, I know Mr. Massey's a supporter of the privatization, there could potentially be a significant savings, I've talked about the use of the automatic arm, but regardless, it's, the, any component that we do is going to require us to do a better job at recycling, and if we don't, that number is going to continue to climb, regardless of, no matter what we do, and, and how we pick up the garbage. So, we, we do have a lot of work to do on the sanitation issue for 2016. The next page is the employee benefits, and the cost of operating a small city of 28,000 people, and the, as you can see, the breakdowns are the pension costs, the workman's comp, health insurance, and payroll taxes and other miscellaneous costs related to payroll. And if you look at the number in the bottom, 34.18% of our budget is employee benefits. So, we want to make sure that our employees have all the benefits they deserve, it's not a, it's not an issue with the employees receiving the benefits, it's just the cost of the benefits. So, we, we need to highlight that as we move forward, is that, that, you know, there are a large portion of this budget goes towards this one specific fixed cost, and there's nothing we, nothing we can do about that, because we're fixed and tied in on our health insurance, we've talked about looking at workman's comp, going self-insurance, so far, the experts that we've had have not been able to figure out a viable pathway to self-insurance that would make it profitable for us, we're still looking at different options with that. Pension costs are set by the state, so it's a big number for a small community like Middletown, 2016, over $13 million. And the last page, which is the, the non-repetitive revenues, and this is the danger that communities can get in, and I've been cautioning for a couple of years now, that we've had a healthy fund balance in all of our accounts, we've also, fund balance being our, our savings, we've also had the benef, the beneficiary of many projects that have come in under budget for, over the years, projects that have been bonded. So, if you look at the top of the page, we are going to be using $600,000 of that, or $600,000 of that savings for the debt service fund balance. These are projects that money was borrowed from, that the projects primarily came in under budget. The second is sale of real property, we've identified at least one major piece of property that we will be selling, and we will, we are setting a minimum bid actually higher than the budgeted amount, to be conservative, hopefully the minimum bid will go through. But, and then the third part is our fund balance transfer, which rounded up to $299,000. So, that's 1.4 million, one, almost 1.5 million dollars in non-repetitive revenue that we need to address, and that's going to be addressed through the, the ESG program that I talked about, on the short term, and along with some changes in sanitation. So, that's our, our budget for the general fund for 2016, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have. Mr. Massey?
Mr. Mayor, if we did not have those three items there, what do you envision the, I think we actually have a dollar amount-
We do.
Okay.
It would be about the, the non-repetitive tax, the non-repetitive revenues represent 8.3% in taxes, so if we, if we were going to raise taxes to cover that amount, it would result in 8.3% tax increase, additional. So, you see the significance of having to make some structural change in how we do business. Now, a lot of people talk about the tax cap, and, you know, we're not required by law to stay within a tax cap, we're required by our conscience and our, and our desire to do what's right for the community. I actually am one of the few mayors in the state that agree with Governor Cuomo regarding the tax cap. I think it saved us, and it made us think about different ways of providing services, and the one, the best example, and the example I gave to the state, was the change from the hook-and-ladder truck that required two people to operate, to the single axle truck, which requires one fireman to operate and drive. And that save, that one decision alone, and it was made because of the tax cap coming in, is saving Middletown residents between $400,000 and $500,000 a year in spending, just that one decision alone. And I think that's what the governor's trying to do, he's trying to get us to look at how we do sanitation, he's trying to get us to do shared services. We did hire Pattern for Progress to meet with the local school district and some of the surrounding communities, we're not having a lot of success in shared services in, in that area, but we are having some, but the state government and, and Governor Cuomo's intent was to make communities make hard decisions, and that's what we're doing in this budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
None. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Alderman, Alderman Massey?
I just have one, and only because I see that Commissioner Twill is back now, and I know he didn't have an opportunity to speak. I am going to speak on just one, one item, and Jacob, you certainly, it's the final resolution we have tonight, and I know that there was quite a bit of discussion on it at the last meeting, and it's the transfer of funds, our transfer from, let me put my glass, general fund balance of $35,000. We fought back and forth in, on this, and, and you know my initial feeling, I don't want to fool with the fund balance at all, and you all know the importance of it, but I'm not going to reiterate all that. What I will say is that, being two professionals, the commissioner and I met with the mayor today, and I think we've come up with a solution that I know I can live with, and, and the commissioner believes he can live with. Look, there was never, ever an idea that we weren't going to get to salt, we always felt that, it was just a matter of where we were going to get it from. I have agreed to go along with, and I'm hoping everyone else will go along with this resolution, the commissioner has agreed that, and he can obviously speak for himself in a second if he chooses to do so, that in the next week or so, we will look through the budget, I think I found some area, but obviously, we want to speak with the commissioner, to make a transfer within the budget to put the money back in the general fund that we take out tonight, the $35,000 that we take out tonight, so that it really won't be a hit on the general fund, if we can find the funds, I believe they're in there, and once Jacob and I and the mayor look at it, if we come up with that, so I feel comfortable going along with this resolution, and I hope everyone else will also, and Jacob, if I misspoke, please.
I just sincerely want to thank you for, for, for this support, and we'll do everything we can in the next couple of weeks before the year is over to find fund in my balance to transfer back into, but I appreciate your support, and everybody else, should you decide to vote for it, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Alderman Burr?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Maria John for a great night out with the Christmas tree, it was well-attended by a lot of the people in the community. Between that, the fireworks night, all the crimes that Kate puts on, it shows that the community's coming together with great turnouts for all those events. And then on the Parks and Rec end, I just appreciate all your support, Chris, you're doing a great job, and we have a couple of resolutions, and we appreciate your support tonight, thank you.
Alderman, back soon.
Good evening, I hope everyone had a safe and happy Thanksgiving. I just want to speak briefly on the tree lighting, because I thought it was fantastic, we were blessed with perfect weather, and I think it was a great kickoff to the holiday season. Brink went over a number of the holiday events that are coming up, and I, I just, I just want to say for, as a mom of four, and to the other families in the community, we really have so much to offer, your kids, your families, and this entire community, so take a look, come out and join us, and, and really experience, I think, what we all did at the night of the tree lighting, this is a great place to live. That's all I have tonight.
Alderman Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to remind you, on our Planning and Economic Development Committee, you've all, your own receipt of information that was gathered by Mr. Namchuk and Mr. Smith, I hope we all schedule that at the next regular meeting and bring that to some type of closure. Obviously, it's a quite intricate story that preceded this decision. I want to thank legislator Berkman for representing us as he does, I said it before, but I'll say it again, because I don't really care, small cities do heavy lifting, and the county and the state should recognize our residents, because we all chip in together with our tax dollars to make it all work. With respect to a cap, it seemed to be the obvious end to the discussion of, are you going to raise my taxes every year for the rest of my life? I get that part. But we also understand that healthcare in the form of a hospital, and schools, and government are the major employers in any community, especially a small city, and employee benefits drive that engine, so it's not sustainable, as they, as we're wont to say at this time, to have all those benefits increase exponentially, and to have spending decrease exponentially. And the rubber will meet the road eventually, and we'll see how it all turns out, but it's not an easy task, and we employ many of the people to pay the taxes, so it gets to be a very circuitous path that we, that we run around, trying to spend our money. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much, I would also like to thank and congratulate those who were involved with putting on that Christmas tree lighting event, it was a wonderful night, and there certainly are a lot of pictures around with people with that tree in the background, so, and thank you to the, the Levi family for providing that.
Thank you. Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you, you know, 60 degrees really helps, it was a great crowd, but mostly, you know, there were so many kids and so many families having fun, and that's what, what's the really great thing to see. I also want to recognize former Alderman, Ed Cummings, third ward Alderman, for he finally stepped down from his role in helping to bring Santa Claus to the festivities. For many, many years, he always did a great job, was very popular. I noticed this year that somehow the Grinch was a lot more popular than Santa Claus, so I see a trend there, I thank the Grinch too. We'll have a combined second, fourth ward constituents meeting, that'll be, I guess, the Monday before our next council meeting, December 14th, it's now the second Monday of the month. It's only fair that we- It's only fair that we transfer some money and buy that salt because for years, we've been using salt, ice, and snow and ice as a slush fund for everything else that needed funding, so I just figure this is just a little payback. I'm sure it'll all work out. We do need, we do need someone on the Ethics Board, Middletown's Ethics Board, since unfortunate passing of Waylotta Barbie, not been able to meet, they still have not gone over this year's declarations and statements of not conflict of interest. And what the Ethics Board really needs is it needs a city employee to volunteer to be on the Ethics Board. So if anyone thinks they'd be willing to do that, please come forward and contact the mayor or barring that, any citizen. But we're required by law to do that. If not, we should be having the county do it for us. So I think we need to step up to the plate and really look hard to try and find someone. And finally, as always, there are still about 10 spots in December that need one person for the warming station to volunteer. It's 342, I do know this by heart, 0209. Nancy, 342. No, yeah, 0209. There's still two training sessions left for volunteers, December 3rd, this Thursday, and December 15th, next Tuesday. I mean, Tuesday and two weeks for a council meeting. But it's been going well, but it's, it's, really does need volunteers to step up, and it's a great thing that this, and the faith council and everyone involved us. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Joffe-Sois.
Thank you. What a difference a year made last year for the tree lighting. It was so cold out there, I think even the tree wanted to go home afterward. This year, we actually picked the right time, the right date, even the right temperature. So kudos to all those that was involved. The public committee made this evening, which resulted into informative discussion about traffic concern in the city. More discussion would be further discussed. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Summers.
I'm going to just reiterate Alderman Kleiner's announcement for the Fourth Ward, Second and Fourth Ward meetings, December 14th, Monday, here. Thank you.
Thank you. New business.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to increase fees of camps implemented by the Middletown Recreation Department to cover rising costs, minimum wage, insurance, and busing of campers.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Witt. Discussion.
Rote. Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Summers.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr for the Treasurer to transfer a total of $6,700 within the 2015 operating budget of the Middletown Recreation and Parks Department for unused funds in pool repairs to park improvements.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion?
Rote. Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Summers.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Summers to apply for county AAA transportation funding for the senior center and for the mayor to sign related documents for the funding.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Summers, seconded by Alderman Joffe-Sois. Any discussion?
Rote. Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Summers.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr to add two non-voting youth delegate seats to the Middletown Recreation Commission, subject to the appointment of the mayor.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Burr, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion?
Rote. Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Summers.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson for the mayor to sign the workman's compensation contract with Marshall and Sterling for 2016.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Johnson, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion?
Rote. Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Summers.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François for the Treasurer to transfer a total of $2,790.94 within the 2015 budget to cover DPW Commissioner's contractual obligations not budgeted.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion?
Rote. Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Summers.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey for the Treasurer to transfer a total of $50,161 within the 2015 budget to cover claims submitted to date and anticipated through the year end.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion?
Rote. Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Summers.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner for the mayor to execute upon Corporation Council review all rental and related agreements for use of the Paramount Theater for the 2016, 2017 season.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion?
Rote. Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Summers.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Summers to authorize the mayor to sign the assessment collector's warrant for 2016.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Summers, seconded by Alderman Massey. Any discussion?
Rote. Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Summers.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey to approve the 2016 annual budget.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey. Will I have a second? Alderman Cassoon. Discussion.
Rote. Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Summers.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François for the Treasurer to transfer a total of $35,000 within the DPW 2015 budget to cover the cost of repairs of street decorative lighting.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Jean-François, seconded by Alderman Cassoon. Any discussion?
Rote. Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Summers.
Aye.
Jean-François.
Aye.
Burr.
Aye.
Massey.
Aye.
President Rodriguez.
Aye.
Resolution passes.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt to authorize the mayor to accept a 2016 solutions funding from the Orange County Youth Bureau and following approval to sign any and all necessary contracts on behalf of the city of Middletown.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Burr. Any discussion?
Rote. Kleiner.
Aye.
Witt.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Graham Cassoon.
Aye.
Summers.
Aye.
Jean-François.